All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, November 21st. Three selectmen are here, four. Now, Mr. Schifrin is here, Ms. Brockio, Mr. Shea, Ms. Vaniff may be here, but she may be late or she may not be able to arrive at all, so we will see. Our first item is an interview process for Technology Committee. So I believe we have members of the Library Board of Trustees and the School Committee, and we also have our Superintendent, Ms. Johnson. So, Ms. Johnson, do you want to...
Sure.
Join us? Anyone you'd like. It's up to you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing us time on the agenda to just briefly review the process. We're delighted to be here, and in keeping with the collaborative spirit of the work that we've done so far to move this commission, the committee along, I think we continue to work in a similar vein, particularly when we take up the conversation of preparing for membership as part of the MTC. We spent considerable time talking about what that membership would be, would look like, and from which of the boards there would be representation and how many and so forth, and it's very well-defined in the language that was voted at town meeting last year. But the process was still a little bit in question, and I think what we did as a school committee was really looked at the composition of the committee and then what would be a reasonable approach to continuing the collaboration as we seek to place the best candidates on the board, so that we can begin our work. So I'm not sure if you have this document in front of you. This was taken up for consideration twice at our school committee meetings, and most recently Roger Challen, someone that we, I think we're pretty familiar with Roger Challen, on the school committee, was very instrumental along with Paul Desmond and the School Department in working together with the town to move this committee forward, crafted some language, and Mr. Capra is the Chair of the South Borough K-8 School Committee. We did have conversations at the meeting and felt that this was probably a reasonable approach to making sure that everyone was part of the process, and that we also had the broadest base of expertise and knowledge represented in the Municipal Technology Committee. And having this, the selectmen, I think, had an opportunity to select, the Board of Selectmen had an opportunity for people to apply to you as well as the school committee, and so we had six folks interested in serving, which is fantastic, presented to the school committee, and I'm not sure the final number to the Board of Selectmen, but a really nice representative group from which to review and interview. So we do have in front of us a suggestion that would offer all three committees, the Library Trustees with their one-member appointment, the School Committee with two, and the Board of Selectmen with two as well, an opportunity to look through the resumes and perhaps interview the candidates, and then collectively discuss the skills and the knowledge, making sure that we had all of that represented on the MTC, and then move forward in discussions as to who might be appointed to this committee, and then each appointing board would take that up for consideration in their own meetings and officially appoint the members.
All right. Well-stated. I agree. I think it's the collaborative approach that I was thinking of as well. Questions by the other members? Ms. Brockio?
No.
Mr. Schifrin?
No.
Mr. Shea?
So just mention, you said that we've received six applicants for...
That's what I'm not sure. I know we did, and I know the Board of Selectmen, I think, posted as long, if not longer, as we did, four positions. Each interested candidate's going in two different directions, so I'm not sure, Vanessa...
We have a number of applicants. What the selectmen have not done yet is designate, you know, the second person that would sit on the interview committee. So I believe Mr. Schifrin was nominated.
Yes.
But we do need to allocate someone else, either another board member perhaps, or an employee. The town administrator and I chatted about this, and we certainly would advocate for the Finance Director to sit on the interview committee.
Thoughts?
I'm fine with that, actually.
It's like a great choice.
Yeah.
Do you...
Acceptable.
Yep. Just one other thing, and I think, Mr. Litt is going to address this. Do you know if when we advertised for this, did we set a date certain as to when people needed to apply by? Because one of the issues that was raised at our last meeting was that the volunteer form on the website required a login, and apparently that login requirement is still there, so I don't know if there are folks who are trying to apply for this but are being prevented from doing so.
Okay, we'll check on that. I thought that technicality had been corrected, but...
So apparently it still exists now.
We'll revisit that first thing in the morning.
And, you know, if there was a deadline, I don't know if we need to revisit that deadline, just to, and before we start the interview process, just to get the full slate...
Exactly.
...of people that are interested in this onboard.
Okay.
If I could just add too, sorry. The impression I got from our brief discussion last meeting was that we were going to pick the people collectively, so that we knew that we had the best range of abilities and things like that. But from what you just said, it seemed like we were going to meet collectively, but then go on our separate ways and choose our people, so...
I think that the appointing boards, the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee, expressed somewhere along, I'm not speaking on your behalf, but I'm just speaking in general, that I know with the select, the School Committee, it was determined that the official appointment needs to come from the select, the School Committee, so that after these candidates are selected and interviewed and that collaborative process has taken place, then the School Committee would officially appoint at its meeting the members that were selected through the collaborative process to represent the school. So if there were five candidates interviewed, selected, and all the conversations took place collaboratively, then the school with its appointing authority for two of its members would officially appoint the two, and the selectmen would perhaps appoint theirs, and the Library Trustees would appoint their one. I might comment on the opening of the application process. If it is decided that there be an extension by the Board of Selectmen to continue to take applications, we would then mirror that process as well. I know we had a date certain, but certainly we want to provide everybody with the maximum opportunity to come forward. So if the decision is that you two would like to extend that, we would be happy to do the same thing, just so we stay in the same timeframe with the board.
So let me make sure I have this myself. So we're going to have all the, so six candidates, so two, two, and one, right? So there's six candidates, five will be chosen, and...
There are six that the School Committee received.
Okay.
I'm not sure what the final number will be. There could be 12 or 15 applicants.
Okay. So you're choosing amongst those who apply through the schools?
Only, exactly.
Only. Is that correct?
Only among those, that's correct.
Okay. All right. So can someone apply?
No.
No. Because this is where, to me, it gets a little bit confusing, because what if we choose, someone applies to the different committees and we choose that person, but you also choose that person and...
Yeah, I think that's the reason for the collaborative process, that we would all interview the candidates together. And then we might decide, well, those two would be good coming from the School Committee, those two would be good coming from the Board of Selectmen.
I see. Okay. All right. And so, and then, so for our purposes, our, Mr. Schifrin and the Finance Director would be part of that review committee, and then you would come back to us with your recommendation, and then we vote as an entire board, I believe?
Correct.
Yep. And Mr. Desmond is the representative from, was chosen, selected to represent the school.
Okay.
With a representative from the School Department.
Okay. Other questions or comments before we go to Mr. Litt?
I would just concur with what Mr. Shea has said regarding with the issues with the website. I would like to see it advertised for, you know, obviously up to the Board's discretion, a week, two weeks, just to make sure with the holiday, that, you know, people that may have tried to apply and couldn't have the opportunity to do so before the selection and interview process starts. Thank you.
Any issue? So if we extend, you would extend, the Library Trustees would extend?
Or the Mary.
Okay.
Do you want to set a deadline now?
Uh, we can look at our calendars. You know, so if it goes out...
Because you're meeting on December 5th and December 19th, so it won't be on the 5th.
So December 19th? Try to have a deadline of 19th.
So, yeah, so we set a deadline so that we can...
So we can extend the deadline on the website for applicants to put their name in.
Yes.
So if you're going to meet again on December 19th, you know, maybe the Wednesday before would be December 13th.
Yeah. I'm all right with that.
But then the group would need to get together to make any recommendations if we're going to make appointments on the 19th.
In that, in that, those five days, yeah.
You could back it up to maybe, maybe the Friday before would be the 8th? After the holiday, you think that's the time?
I think that would make sense. We'd leave until the 8th, and they could have that week.
Yep. To meet and review.
To meet and review.
And we're sure that the website is...
We're going to fix that.
Will be fixed.
No, we're sure that it's, it's still happening, that you need a login.
It did. It just happened to me.
Okay. All right. Does that make sense, everyone?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Litt?
Tim Litt, 148 Woodland Road. So first, this process is indeed what we had in mind when we started putting this together. The, in fact, the original thought for that came from, from Mr. Desmond, and I give him credit for it every time I can. I think a couple of points. One is, as far as this nuisance with the website, I think it's important to put a note on the website that it is in fact fixed, because anyone who's gone to the front door and then gotten stuck is not going to try, try again. A couple of other things that I probably should have mentioned last week. One is that it seems that we are indeed blessed with a number of people who are stepping up to volunteer, which is consistent with the research we did going into this, where we found, you know, hundreds of people with at least the expertise. And I thought I should point out that the architecture for the MTC has more than one way for citizens to participate in it. You know, it has provisions, of course, for the appointed committee slots, but it also has the ability to attach consultants, perhaps it was an inflammatory name, I didn't mean it, to augment its expertise, and even temporary ex officio members can be appointed as, as needed. So I think it's important that we not discourage people by having this, having a sense that, well, it's five, it's only five, and when you're rejected, you're rejected. There will be more opportunities to contribute, and there will be a need for it, because the scope of this is larger than any five people can handle by themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Litt. And sir, if you had a comment, just if you can come to the microphone, your name and address, please.
Terry Ryan, Whistler Lane. I'm the representative for the library. So I want to get this, and make sure I understand this. If I'm interested, or my neighbor was interested in being in the technology group, he has to apply to two different places, and actually three, if you're saying you have your group of people, they have to apply to her list and potentially to a library list which we don't even have. Is that correct? Because that seems sort of foolish.
So if, if people want to apply to three different spots, there's nothing prohibiting that, from what I can tell. You know, but there would be a collaborative interview process, so you're really being interviewed for one slot, and you may fit best as a representative from the schools, or from the Board of Selectmen, or from the Library Trustees.
Okay. So we, as the library, can we just leverage your list so we don't have to try to, like, get our own list? Because we, we don't have a process to do that, because we've never been in this situation where we're...
I would have no issue with that. We're doing this collaboratively.
Okay, good. And then, second is, once we get together, and we have this nice little meeting, and there, we pick five people, we're saying that I'm going to select, or the library will select one person. Now, is that person going to be someone who is supposed to represent the needs of the library in particular, or is it collectively that we want them to represent the needs of the town?
So from my perspective, they would collectively, and we'll hear from the others, they would collectively represent the needs of the town with some, hopefully some particular expertise in what the library would need.
Okay. All right.
Any other thoughts on that?
Perfect. Great. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
As I said last week, I mean, it's, it's, it's an artifact of the way that the town is organized, that we have three different pipes for people to apply for a position. It really shouldn't matter which pipe feeds into the pool, right? I mean, people shouldn't have to apply to three different places. Wherever they come in, they come into, you know, one group, and the three organizations together, look at that pool and sort out. You know, this feels good to me as someone who can represent the town and understands the selectmen, or represent the town and understands the library or the schools.
Makes sense to me.
Don't, don't make it overly complicated. Life is complicated enough.
Thank you, Mr. Litt. Anything else, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you very much. This is an exciting opportunity, and we look forward to working more closely with the town and continue the good work together.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And happy Thanksgiving. There was one more thing.
All right. So next, we're going to have a joint meeting with the Personnel Board regarding the proposed FY19 changes to the Personnel Bylaw. Personnel Board would like to join us?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Liz Henry-Veneman, and I, as of the end of September, was elected Chair of the Personnel Board. Russ Milholland, who you probably know, remained Vice Chair. Also on the board was David Flynn still, and Bessie Rosenbloom was just appointed to fill the vacancy left by Joe Lanning, our former Chair who left in July, not just, but in September. We currently have a vacancy left by Kim Deans, who was a Controller and chaired the working group, and whose efforts on the financial spreadsheet for that work were invaluable. The Salary Administration Plan, also known as the Personnel Bylaw, the entire Personnel Bylaw failed to pass at the 2017 town meeting, in case you weren't aware of that. I'm sure you were. Some changes we saw were routine, others were controversial. The Board has been carefully examining this document to get it right this time. Mrs. Rosenbloom, Ms. Rosenbloom, was delegated to work with the Assistant Town Administrator to pull this together for town meeting. The Board is currently weighing the best way to present the revisions to voters, print the entire bylaw, in the warrant, summarize changes, short presentation, et cetera. We are not seeking a title change this year to the Assistant Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator slash Human Resource Director. Advice from the town's Labor Attorney clarified that the Town Administrator's job description clearly identifies him as the Personnel Director, and Council has opined that he is the authority to, he has the authority to delegate personnel responsibilities to the Assistant Town Administrator. Minimum wage was also controversial. Currently, our Personnel Consultant is reviewing and updating the part-time positions under Schedule C of the SAP. We anticipate that when the update hourly rates come back, they will all be above $11 an hour. The current state minimum is $11 an hour. And I would note also that municipalities are not bound to pay the state minimum wage. They are only bound to federal, and many towns do, and the federal wage is lower at the moment. The Board...
But you're, you're confident that come this town meeting, that'll, that'll, those changes will be reflected?
We will be making this as a matter of policy. We are also seeking Board input, which is one of the reasons why we're here tonight. We want to get your feedback on that. And it is a delicate matter. There are opinions on the Board that it is very difficult to recruit and maintain people if you're paying the state minimum wage, but there are some exclusions to that, so it's a little complicated. Since we know that the wages will change, we may delete any reference to the, this and the SAP altogether and handle it through a separate policy which can be revised as needed, much the way we determine the annual salary increase. So, let's see. Just a heads up, I have two other things to say, and then I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Rosenbloom to answer any questions you might have about the changes. First of all, there's going to be a budget heads-up. We're going to be going for $42,000 to finish the last phase of the adjustments that were made necessary by the 2015 salary and compensation study. Also, we want your input on the wage discussion, and I think that's pretty much it. I have some other sort of general comments, but nothing specific to the SAP, so.
Hello.
Good evening.
Is this on?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't usually need a microphone. So I don't know how much you want to get into the weeds on this. Vanessa and I have spent several hours together. Her assistance is invaluable. As our Labor Counsel noted in his meeting with us in September, the SAP has been cobbled together for bits and pieces through many years, so not all of it works entirely perfectly. So we're going through it provision by provision. It's my recommendation that we not do anything, not to try to fix it all in one year. And where Vanessa has been invaluable is telling me the provisions that actually cause trouble for her in practice, rather than just, oh, we don't like how that sounds, or that's archaic language, or there are two provisions, Section 3 and 4, that may conflict and cause trouble. Vanessa tells us what we need to fix now, because in practice, it comes up and it's an issue and it needs clarification. So it's not perfect. I don't know if you were given, I don't know what documents...
Yes, that's in their packet.
The side-by-side. So you can see, we're trying to update some things, make things more clear, add things that need to be added, and, and not fix it all overnight. It's a, it's a long-term plan. So I don't know if you have specific...
All right.
Questions?
Questions for the Personnel Board. Mr. Shea?
You know, no questions right now, but just an observation, obviously remembering what happened at the last annual town meeting with respect to this. I think it's very good that you have jumped on this as quickly, as early in the, in the whole year as you have. Certainly, it's out there for people to start reviewing now. There's no excuse, you know, come April town meeting, for people not to have the information. This may, I presume, undergo some more tweaks and finalization revisions as we, as we move along, but it's good to see the work, the product that's been produced so far.
Thank you. And as you may recall, I am not uniquely suited, but may be well-suited to get into the middle of it. A, I am an attorney with some experience in drafting, and B, I was in the thick of the comments last year regarding some of the questions, so.
She was part of the problem. No, she's part of the solution.
Trying to be part of the solution. And we have gotten a couple of legal opinions regarding it, and we continue to pursue that. Just last week, Vanessa and Mark Purple and myself chatting again with Tim Norris about this, and hope to go to town meeting prepared.
I would also add that the Personnel Board has been meeting much more frequently, you know, practically every other week, to, you know, get through as much of the bylaw as they can and other compensation issues. So I think we'll be very well-prepared for town meeting.
Excellent. Mr. Schifrin?
Yeah, I think the only question I had was along the same lines in that, just to make sure there's a clear understanding of, of why it didn't pass last time, and that those major things are being addressed when we go forward. And then, as an observation or comment on the, more having to do with like the budget request that you mentioned, I'm obviously new, but I, I think it's really unfortunate, or, and I'm glad it's being done, but problematic that in next year's budget, in 2018, it'll be a correction from a 2015 report. So whatever that committee can do to get up on that equality and really get that done, and make sure that that doesn't happen again in the future, I think, would be a good thing.
Right. And the problems that arose that were identified in the 2015 study were a long time in the making, too. So it was, it is true that it was not dealt with in a timely way, but that's changing.
Thank you.
Ms. Brockio?
Thank you. I would first like to say, I've attended the majority of the Personnel Board meetings in the last few months, and I commend Ms. Henry for taking the helm, and she has done a tremendous job. I have seen so much progress in the last few months, so I commend you on that. I see things getting done that I've heard may not have been as streamlined as they are now. I think it's a really great committee you have together. I commend Ms. Rosenbloom for stepping forward, as she said, being, if I can use the term troublemaker, as I like to use with her at town meeting. It's rare that we see somebody actually step forward and want to help fix the problem that they brought forward. So again, and I've seen the hard work that, I actually sat through the meeting when all of these changes were discussed, when they went line item by line item. It was a tremendous amount of work, and I also commend Ms. Hale on that for taking the time and sitting down and the dedication to doing this. I, I think this committee's going in a great direction. I don't anticipate huge problems at town meeting on this, as well having Ms. Rosenbloom be able to speak up to the problems that she had and seeing them addressed now. On being on the working group, it's good to see some of the changes that were suggested in the past get taken care of now. Again, I think it's all going in a very positive direction on the Personnel Board, and I look forward to the continued great job that I think you're doing, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice to hear that.
Thank you.
And just a few comments, ladies. So I would echo Mr. Schifrin's commentary about the, you know, if there are shortages that are being addressed, you know, again, I feel for the employees. And as part of what this, members of, members of... And as part of what this, members of this Board have discussed before is, you know, a merit-based pay system. Have you done that kind of analysis? You know, can we go to that? If so, when? I'd love to see, you know, the best employees compensated with the best compensation we can offer. Those who strive to do extra things on behalf of the residents of Southborough would love to see them compensated with additional merit pay, whether that be at the end of a year or spot bonuses, whatever we could do to help attract and retain the very best employees for our town. Have you had those discussions?
Yes, we have. We have a punch list for 2018. It's just that, it's not anything we've, you know, voted on, but identity, we have identified problems that we want to work on. One of them is the employee recognition. There are a lot of different terms for that floating around, merit pool, honorarium. We have to do that. New and change positions, reclassifying employees, analyzing and adjusting compensation as a matter of policy, determining annual salary adjustments and so forth. The protocols in maintaining job descriptions, interview panels, performance reviews, these are all on the docket, but not until we get the SAP nailed. And we also have in the works possibly a sick bank policy, some language regarding overtime, possibly. These are all things that have been requested, certain job classifications, longevity schedules, which have not been updated in 17 years, at least 17 years, possibly longer, and adding professional certifications to degree bonuses, which are very significant in some cases. So, those are all in the works. Certainly, the merit-based issue has been one we've been talking about pretty intensely for a little while now, and we're going to have to spend some focused time on that when we don't have these other things. But it probably will not happen this year, but-
Okay, but it's definitely something in your-
It's definitely something.
And I would love to see it in the follow, as a focus area then for the, you know, for the following fiscal year, if that's possible, so.
Yes, it's been, it's long overdue.
Okay, thank you. And then, so, a couple of the things that did, we all know that things that happened last year, and so, absolutely a focus on the minimum wage issue and ensuring that there's an in-depth analysis of that and a rationale provided for the Board's recommendations there, as well as a red-line comparison of, I think that was missing from last time, of people wondering, you know, what are we replacing with what? And being able to see, you know, that red-line comparison and have that well in advance of town meeting, and even copies available at town meeting, if that's administratively feasible, because I know that was an issue last year as well.
Right. Want to make that as clear as possible, for sure.
Okay. All right. Any other-
I can just add one final thought. I also agree that a lot of the underfunding issues have been a long time in the making, but I just want to reiterate that positive steps are being made on this. There was just a distribution that's in the process of being made now, as well as for the additional monies that Ms. Henry referenced at the beginning of her talk. That's in the hands of the consultant now, just to verify and go over the numbers. So, in a relatively short period of time, I know to the employees, it's not a short period of time, but since we've all been working together, there has been some progress, so I think that's a positive step. There's still much more to do, obviously, but again, I like to appreciate the steps that have been taken, and the employees will be able to see some steps being made by the town, recognizing that there are issues and we're working towards resolving them, so.
Well said.
Thank you. And I'd like to say, the working group was absolutely essential. I'll make this really short.
No, no, keep your time. You have the microphone.
There was an adjustment done immediately after the survey came out. The reason that this, well, I won't say the reason, but certainly a complicating factor was, there was not a clear sense of how this should be done equitably. Everyone that was below the minimums in the new categories were put up the minimums. That was done immediately. It was how to address the longevity issue and other matters, that there wasn't a clear sense of agreement about how to proceed with that. So, the formation of the working group, in principle, was a great idea. It just took forever for it to actually happen, and that was the, I think, the worst thing about it. But it did happen, and they did a fabulous job, and now we can move forward. And I thank you, Lisa, for that.
Thank you.
Anything else? No? Anything else, ladies?
I would just ask you to have patience. A large part of our focus has just been dealing with some of the legal issues inherent in the fact that when the Town Administrator Bylaw was passed, it gave jurisdiction to the Town Administrator in his or her role as Personnel Director to do some of the things that the SAP gives the Personnel Board authority to do. And when you sit down, I don't know if you got the line-by-line comparison of the, I can give you all copies of this and you can read it before you go to bed, it'll put you to sleep, line-by-line comparing the authority of the Town Administrator as Personnel Director vis-à-vis the SAP, the Personnel Board authority, and there is overlapping and concurrent jurisdiction. So, a large part of our focus has, of necessity, been just sorting out who has the authority to do what. And when the Personnel Board sat down to examine the SAP after town meeting, found there were other problematic statements and language within the SAP, and it's been three or four months now that we've just been trying to iron those. So, if we don't get to all of the issues that you want to see on the merits, know that it's because the procedural things are taking some time. And that's not offered as an excuse, just operating under open meeting law, there's only so much you can do.
Yes.
So.
Understood. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I could, I have no doubt that the procedural stuff will get worked out appropriately eventually, but you have an upcoming meeting with the consultant in December.
November, next week.
Oh, next week, okay. So, I just think we should know, if something comes from that, that there are deficiencies or something that should be corrected sooner rather than later, I think at least I would like to know that, and if there's a way we can correct it or do it, I think we would like to work with the Personnel Board to do that.
Are you talking in a general sense or in specific cases?
I'm talking about specifically that our employees are being paid appropriately.
Oh, right.
And if it's identified with the consultant next week that they're not, I, as one member, would like to know sooner rather than later, so we can attempt to address it.
Right, okay. Thank you. We will do that. And there are a few specific issues that we are working on, so generally, we act right away, and we've been able to find, you know, monies and budgets, departmental budgets, our budget, that we can settle most of the things that she's brought back to us, but there are some major ones now, so we'll see.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much for seeing us.
Thank you.
And we look forward to working with you.
All right, so next we'll have interviews for the Economic Development Committee term, Ms. Duka, if you would. This would be for a term expiring on June 30 of 18. Ms. Duka has been, we did receive a letter from the EDC unanimously recommending Ms. Duka for this position. I've had the pleasure of hearing from her before and find her incredibly qualified for the position. So, but first, if you would, let us know your name and your interest in the role.
Suzanne Duka, and I've been working with the EDC for a couple of years. I work for CBRE, which is a commercial real estate firm in Boston. I'm not a broker. I am the Director of Research and Partner at the firm. And so, we just, you know, I have a lot of experience kind of working with companies, tenants, kind of looking to make moves, kind of understanding, you know, why a company wants to come to town, why they don't, kind of what keeps them here, what doesn't. So, that's kind of my interest, is, you know, finding the right mix of businesses to bring to town, and kind of what needs to happen to get them, to get them here and to keep them here.
Thank you. Questions on Mr. Shea?
So, you mentioned you've been working with the EDC-
Yep.
-for a number of years. So, and is that, you know, just in what capacity? How frequently?
Really just providing kind of information to, on vacancy rates, kind of tenants that are in the town, anything that's kind of, we would share with kind of clients, so nothing, you know, proprietary, but kind of giving them a sense of kind of what, you know, what the commercial vacancy rates are, kind of, you know, who's coming and who's going.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Schiffern?
One of the things I've liked from the past couple EDC meetings that I've been to is the discussion about a revitalization downtown. So, do you have any feelings on that or ideas or comments, or have you thought about that at all?
Yes. I think something needs to change. What that turns out to be, I think, you know, needs to come as a collective sense from the town, whether it means it's more walkable, there's bike paths, whether there's small businesses, you know, obviously, we're not a big-box community. But I think, you know, bringing some life to downtown and making people want to come and stay, and making businesses want to come and stay. And that can mean a lot of different things. So, I think, yes, I think that's a big focus of, you know, kind of what the EDC should be focusing on.
I think that would be great.
Ms. Brock, you?
Well, Mr. Schiffern took my question, so thank you for answering it. I would just like to, I've heard good things about you from the EDC. I spoke to Julie Conley, and she's spoken about the volunteer work that you've done. I thank you for that. And it's nice to see people get involved in town without even being on the committee, so I thank you for that, I'm sure, as well as the Board does. I think you bring a lot to the EDC, and I'm very excited for the work that you'll be doing with them, so.
Thank you.
So, I would move that we appoint Ms. Duka to the EDC with the term expiring 6/30/18. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go a little bit out of order, if I may. And so, in the Chairman's Report, I just have one thing, and I know Ms. Ferguson is here as well. The, with Thanksgiving approaching, the 11th Annual Gobble Wobble will take place on Thursday starting at Trotiere Middle School. I believe it kicks off around 8:00 a.m., a little bit after, come early. So, those who haven't signed up yet, you can still sign up through the Recreation's website, and there's events for adults, there's also a kids' fun run, and it's a, it's one of the best events that happens, you know, this year in the town. It's really a great way to start out Thanksgiving morning. I plan on being there, hopefully others can join, and so, the Gobble Wobble on Thursday.
Can I ask one question on the Gobble Wobble? Ms. Ferguson, are you still looking for volunteers? I know you were short volunteers. You're good? Okay.
Full load coming in.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure that they were set, so thank you.
Excellent, okay. Is there an Administrator's Report?
Just a very short one. Just a reminder for the community that the transfer station will be closed Thursday and Friday in honor of Thanksgiving, open normal hours on Saturday. We've already covered the Gobble Wobble. The town offices also will be closed Thursday and Friday this week. And just a quick note from the Town Administrator, today we opened electricity aggregation bids, and we accepted a two-year price of 10.8 cents per kilowatt. So, based on the electricity capacity, pricing trends as they affect the basic service rates, this rate will remain competitive over the course of the contract, so you'll be hearing much more about that. Our vendor, Peregrini, will do an outreach campaign to all Southborough customers to inform them of their choice and the details of the aggregation program. So, you'll be hearing more about that as we get into the process a little bit more.
Excellent, thank you.
And I just wanted to emphasize what the Personnel Board said, that we do have a vacancy on the Personnel Board. That is an appointment of the Town Moderator, but if you know of anyone, you can certainly reach out to Mr. Semino, the Town Moderator.
May I ask Ms. Hale a question?
Please.
Thank you. I don't know if you know the answer to this. Do we know when the parking lot here is going to be opened back up?
We do know. I don't think it's much longer. I spoke with Paul Pisinski, our health agent, yesterday. He said the installation of our new septic system is going very well, so I don't think it'll be much longer.
Okay. I just had a couple of questions, so thank you.
So, we've got a great influx of participants, plenty of good seats up front. Folks, whoever would like to come join us, please. Excellent. I would like to go through the consent agenda items, if I may, and I'm going to, first of all, there's seven of them. I was going to read them. Does anyone want any one held? I have none to hold. Then I'll move that we approve consent agenda items 1 through 7. One, approve meeting minutes for October 3rd and 27th. Appoint Brian Schiffern to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee. Reappoint Luisa Vargas to the Southborough Trails Committee. Reappoint Chelsea Bradway Francis to the Southborough Cultural Council. Accept a pilot payment of $22,000, $615,000 from Harvey Medical School. Accept a donation of $500,000 from St. Mark's School toward Fay Memorial Playground, and accept donations totaling $1,600 for Southborough Youth and Family Services. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. All right, and then I'm going to go ahead and do the update on purchases and sale agreement with St. Mark's School for the golf course. So, we have, and I want to commend Mr. Shea, Mr. Rooney, and also Mr. Purple. They've produced a history of the purchase and sale agreement with St. Mark's School from 2015 to 2017. There's an incredible amount of work that went on from volunteers and our full-time staff to make all of this happen. This history is going to be placed on the town's website shortly, maybe tomorrow.
Yep, first thing in the morning.
And I'll note, and Mr. Shea, chime in, please, with anything I may miss, speak about or miss, but, so as part of the PNS that we entered into, there was some due diligence that happened with that. There was a Phase 1 21E studies that both parties conducted on the parcels. One of the parcels came back, the Zero School Street parcel, that St. Mark's ended up not wanting, so there was a price adjustment reflected there. There was also, the demolition costs were estimated by the parties, and then those came back, so there was an adjustment that folks will note on demolition. There was, so the amount, there was an amount needed to cover that, which the Finance Director noted that there's an existing loan authorization from a 1998 purchase of real property. We were able to use that remaining, well, not, there was a balance of 2.6. We didn't need near that much, so, but there was funding available. Town had Board Council review and concurred that the town may use a portion of that balance towards the acquisition, which the town will do. And then, some other highlights, on November 8th, just a short time ago, Governor Baker signed into law the Special Act requested by the town for the purchases and sale of St. Mark's. On November 14th, the Legislature overrode the Governor's veto, so there was some, there was $100,000 that was earmarked in the state budget designated for Southborough's Public Safety Facility project, which is great. The Governor did veto that, that veto was overridden, so the town of Southborough will be receiving $100,000 towards that project, which is great news. And then, through our Town Council, a survey of the entire 36 Corterville Road parcel is being completed. The closing is tentatively scheduled for the week of December 3rd. Great news. Did I miss anything?
No, covered it well. Again, it's hard to believe, it's been a two-year process. We started the discussions with St. Mark's in the fall of 2015. At the time, we didn't think it would take this long to do, but there's a lot that went into it that summarized in that, in that history. I encourage everybody to read it, and looking forward to the closing, the week of the 3rd, to keep this project moving.
Same here. Board will note, Ms. Vaniff is here, welcome. We do have Recreation Committee review the master plan. Ms. Ferguson, if you would, join us, please. Anyone else you'd like to have join?
Steve.
Hello, welcome.
I'll be doing the talking.
Doesn't matter where I sit.
Thank you.
These are different than what's going up here.
Can we use the projection?
Yeah, it's warming up.
It's warming up, oh, okay.
See Sony?
Oh, there we go. Well, I'm not so technical, so.
We'll see.
As we wait for this, my name is David Candela, and I'm joined by Kristin Lovell from the Recreation Commission. We've really thanked, thank you a lot for meeting with us. I know it's kind of crammed in, and we really appreciate that.
Oh, just Jen Hans is also with us.
Well, we're here with a lot of people, as you can see. I'm sorry, just up here, and Dorit is here, and another member of Jen is here as well, too. We are down to a couple members of our commission. We lost Brian, and...
We gained Brian.
Yeah, exactly. We're, we're excited for Brian. So, we are here to talk about, oh yeah, I'm sorry, it's not quite up there, but we can, this is our first slide.
But just before you start, along those lines, I was on the Recreation Commission when this report was commissioned and done. So, the commission didn't necessarily put any content into it. This is the result of the engineers' review of our facilities and fields. So I don't believe there's any conflict with me participating with this discussion, but I just welcome any comments, if anybody had any, to the contrary.
No, thank you, Ms. Schiffern.
Yeah, fair enough. So, exactly, just what we were, we are here to, as everyone knows, we did a, or I think everybody knows, if the town members don't know, we did a facility study, I'm just gonna say, started about a year ago, with the idea to get us a master plan, a two- to five-year plan, and a master plan down the road. We, we wanted to have a, if anybody has seen it, it is a full, huge book with pictures of the fields. The gentleman, of course, I'm joining, from Birchwood, Eddie is here.
Art Eddie.
From Birchwood, Art, Arthur, sorry. Art Eddie from Birchwood, I apologize. And they helped us put the study together, along with Parr, and it's a, it breaks down everything, that the facility, a whole study of everything, not, and we'll go through all this. So to start, I don't see it up there, so I apologize. I think everybody has, if I'm not mistaken, has it there. So, we did the facility study, and to talk of how we got there, let's just go right through it. Southborough's last facility study was completed in nineteen ninety-nine, so our fields have been neglected. We, there has been very little done, we, the study was, I was obviously not a part of it in nineteen ninety-nine. We got some key benefits done from that study, but since then, there's been no movement. So we, after these years have gone by, as a group, decided we need to move forward with a master plan, so we can have a plan for our fields to, to move forward. So, I'm not gonna wait for this, I'm sorry, let's just, let's just go for it, I don't want to waste your time. So, well, I'll just read it off, I'll read it off.
The viewing audience at home.
Yeah, exactly. I'll read it off. So, we, the last study was done in nineteen ninety-nine. In two thousand and sixteen, Parr Corporation and Birchwood were retained by the town to assess the facilities and usage and development recommendations for future plans. The final report discusses facility needs, including fields, gymnasiums, opportunities for improvement or impossible expansion, and associated costs. We, we don't have enough room. We don't have enough fields. It's, I could tell you that, the whole world could tell you that, I think we've discussed that already. We do not have enough space, and, so how can we make the best of our footprint that we have? This is part of what the facility was for. We have fields, how can we make them better, or how can we move forward? So, so additionally, Parr and Birchwood conducted a demand assessment that includes analysis of current programs, scheduling and input for key user groups. So, who's using the field? We're represented by, I think, a lot of our sports members, you know, I, I don't, I don't want to leave anybody out, but soccer, lacrosse. I think, you know, I'm representing women, girls lacrosse, and we've heard from all them, all the groups. They worked together with them to see how we can make this, you know, how, what's being used, and how we can make our footprint better. So, the, the information evaluated includes the condition of existing, existing, existing facilities, turf, surface quality and age, availability of drainage and utilities, subsurface soil conditions, wetland areas, parking availability and access, general site constraints, and site accessibility. So basically, we're studying, they studied all of it. Took pictures of the fields, took all the, the things that we don't always understand as a rec commission and as just town people that are on the fields. So, we took this and we said, you know, let's turn this into a plan, obviously, that's the whole idea. Turn this into a master plan, and turn this into a five-year plan, so we can get this, get, get some, get our fields up to, up to par. So, our objective from this, the reason why we obviously want to do this is to ensure safe and quality conditions across our facilities. Obviously, that's the most important thing. I could spend hours up here telling you about our fields and how horrible they are. I'm on the fields all three seasons coaching. I think anybody in this town could tell you that. I think anybody from out of town could tell you that. They're horrible. And, it's our job as a Recreation Committee to, to work together with the town to make them, you know, to see what we can do to make them better. Okay, that's okay. So, other objectives. Alleviate congested schedules and provide more playing time across user groups. Obviously, we're, we're practicing three teams of tiny fields, no goals, cones, you know, whatever. And we, and listen, it is what it is, right? We're, we're working with it, we want it, we want it to get better. So recognize and adapt the cultural changes to better support working parents and extended working hours. This is a key issue in today's world. You know, I hear the argument, well, when I was a kid, we didn't have lights. Well, you know, the world's changed a little bit, and it's, we gotta move forward. And that has to do with some of the other things that we'll get to quickly, the lights that we put on the fields and things of that nature. Restore, maintain, and provide the ability to rest current fields. The small amount of fields that we have are just getting destroyed, not only because we can't maintain them, but because there's just a lot of use on them. And we don't have, we don't have the greatest multi-surface fields. So, the little ones we have are, are getting destroyed, and getting destroyed each day that goes on, which down the road could cost us more issues and money and so forth. Lastly, maximize the use of Southborough's current recreation footprint in an effort to mitigate future needs and costs related to acquisition of new product, property. Simply put, again, we don't have a lot of space, we want to keep the footprint, or we want to work on what we have. As we know, buying land for rec is, you know, just not really, we'd love it to happen, but it's just unrealistic, right? There's not a lot of land to purchase anyways. So, we took this, we worked really hard. You know, we've worked for a year, we've lost members, we have members, and we've tried to put, we have put together a master plan that's about ten years out. Now, we really want to discuss more about a two- to five-year plan, because, and we'd also would like to see, our whole point here is to start a discussion with you, with everybody. The town, the select men and women, everybody, to just get it in the open, because we have to start somewhere. That's kind of our, we're not here to force something down your throat, even though we feel very strongly about this. We're not looking at, we do not look at this as a want, we look at this as a need. Like, I can't make that a point, we're, that's why we're kind of trying to get this going, because it's not like, oh, we want to put a dome on our field so the kids can stay. We want the kids just to be able to not run and go fall in a hole. I don't want my fourth grader taking a penalty kick uphill, and then downhill, and it's a joke, right? So, we want to work together with the town and, and see what we can do to, you know, make our fields better. So, so the short-term priorities, and this isn't quite in the exact order, but we have a, on this slide, it says two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen. It's really a two-to-five-year plan, because we're, by the time it gets started and gets finished, I think it would be, and our goal would be about five years until it's all said and done. So, well, from the study, what we've come to the conclusion the most is that we need a turf field in the town with lighting and drainage. That's a goal of about, realistically, summer twenty-twenty, you know, we're kind of just, we're not looking for that next year. We're, we want to start the process and get that going. Repair to Lumblad Field. This is a little bit of a complicated issue, just because, and we'll see when we get to what we're, how we want to work this, is that we don't know really what we have in store with Lumblad Field. We just know it offers a lot of space, the kind of space we need, without having to do much. But it's covered by a rubber membrane, and we need to do some research and see if it's even something we can do. We could say it could cost two million dollars, we could say it's a joke, and we're not gonna do it, you know? So, we're kind of up in the, those are the things we're trying to do research on and get the ball moving. Repairs of existing town fields, these are just basic, I don't mean basic, but just repairs to the existing fields of Calendar and De Petri, so they're not a dirt... I'm just gonna refrain from calling what I would call them horrible fields that are a joke to play on. They just are, they are. And then the track repairs, which is, I wouldn't call it a track, it's a, some kind of rubber thing with holes in it. So, those are things that we would like to get, those are in the short-term priorities. What we have funded previously, in the summer of two thousand and eighteen, Mooney Field Lights. In the summer of two thousand and eighteen, Richardson Tennis Court Lighting. And in the late fall of two thousand and seventeen, and this is kind of in the processes, the nine eleven memorial field repairs. And we're still, as you have worked hard on this, is still in the process, and we're hoping to get done. To cut to it, the financial impact and assumptions. So, we have, again, sorry for those who can't see it, but we have two boxes up here. We have a total project's cost, which, to cut through, you know, it comes through a four-million-dollar price tag, let's say. This has a thirty percent contingency written into it, so, which is large, and we understand that. But we just want to be, we're just trying to come up with, and these are things that we can discuss and go over and talk about, but that's what we have written in there right now. And on the other side, so that has the turf, Calendar Field Repliers, Trotiere School Track Repairs, De Petri Field Repairs, and Lumblad Field Repairs. What we are proposing for Warren Art, an article for two thousand and eighteen, I kind of went over, but our, comes to a million thirty-three eight hundred. So that is a turf field, so, we want to do this right. We don't want to just throw it to the town, we want a turf field. Here's where we want, they suggested to put it, what do you, like, we're gonna, so their first point is to, to talk about this turf field, the design and the permits. That comes to two hundred thousand dollars, so that is something we'll be asking for at town meeting. Calendar Field Repairs, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Trotiere School Track, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. De Petri Field Repairs, two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And the Lumblad Field Design and Specialty Consultants, seventy-five thousand dollars. That's to basically find out what is going on with Lumblad Field, and can we use it? And that is truly up in the air. I, I can honestly say that Lumblad is just one of those areas that we're not all that confident about, but we also have, it's a lot of space. It can, it can put three fields, it would help us. So, if it makes sense to do, it'd be something we'd love to talk about.
So for those who don't know where these are, you can just explain where those fields are, please?
Sure. So, De Petri is the parking lot, excuse me if I, you think I would know, De Petri's in the parking lot of Neri. Kind of behind Lumblad Field. If you can picture it, there's a hill that's fenced in, a lot of people don't, dogs, I think, go up there. Little kids practice up there, because they're the only ones that would ever put anybody up there, because it's a joke, it goes, it goes like this. But it's a lot of space, so it's, it's really, it's a ton of space. So if you go up there, check it out, there's more space than you can imagine. Without getting into details, it's, it's the old...
Got it.
Yeah, and it's covered by rubber membrane. So, Calendar, how do I explain this? This is over by, can you best explain?
Off of thirty, off of thirty, where the, where the golf course, Stony Brook Golf Course used to be right here.
You don't see it from Route thirty, it's across from like the car wash that's there on Route thirty. You don't see it unless you have a game there, to be honest with you. It's a nice flat field. I mean, it's, that field has the potential with a lot of, I don't want to discount that this isn't a lot of money, I'm just saying, without putting it, just do the more, normal maintenance that we'd do to get it up and running and irrigation, and those are things that we can get far more into for people who know far more than about it than I do. Sorry, Calendar, Trotiere School Track is around Trotiere, that has a field inside it. And the turf field, which we'll quickly go over when we get there, is being proposed at Neri. If you can picture all, there's a playground there, and then there's a ton of grass field, a flat, open, I wish I knew the...
Where the fireworks go off.
Where the fireworks.
Where the fireworks go off, exactly. Little kids pro, we have little, we have the, the smaller kids' games on there, it's a dustball, and it's a nice flat area with open space, lots of open space. So it's just, it's the only place in town that would have that kind of...
Would that impact fireworks, Southborough Knights?
It would.
Location?
You would have to move the fireworks, and then to move the fireworks, you'd have to increase the height, which increases the price of the fireworks. So we'd have to get more sponsorships for the, for that program or route.
All right.
We actually did that, look into options for protecting turf, if we went on that route, and I think it's cost prohibitive, to say the least.
To just put something over the turf, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, exactly. So a couple of things about this, real quick, is that, you know, we talked about the thirty percent contingency. We also, we understand that we're not on the, hope I can word this right, because I'm not capital, you know, the two thousand and nineteen capital plan, would it be? We're not on the capital plan, we understand that. And, again, that's kind of why we're here, to get the ball rolling. We tried to, we put this together as quickly as we could, and we, we're not on it. I think it's important, you know, we are, with some of the, with the turf, we have ways that we think we can cut costs. None of this is guaranteed, from corporate sponsors to renting, to club soccer, which is enormous out there right now. There are renting fields and spending money on fields, and corporate and individual sponsorships. And obviously, we will have more usage of the field that can generate more, more money on the return. And Lumblad is just something that we need to really kind of do some research on. Thank you. So, so that's, that's where we are. So, next, I just want to update on active, on our, some of the things that we're doing, and we won't spend a lot of time on that, and just go through some of the field, which we kind of did, and we'll, we'll move quickly through this. So, an update on our active efforts, Chote Field, Chote Field Lights and Field. I think last week, you might have even been updated on that, if I'm not mistaken. I don't mean to, I thought maybe, it just, I just don't know, I'm not wasting a lot of time on going through everything.
I think it's important, it's current status, so, week of eleven twenty-one, transformer installation, electrical hook up, we'll start.
Exactly. So we're looking to get it started. And as, exactly, so, we, exactly, and those are things that we, these will help us, obviously, this is part of our plan. We started with these lights, and we're working to get, again, to get the fields that we have to be used, and so we don't have to, in fall, end practice at four fifteen, right? Which is, you know, hard to do. We, some of the issues that we ran into, and, because we want to, we want to, we know that there, we know that there was issues with the lights and some other, you know, we, we understand that. And, some of those, just simply put, requests, we, the funding wasn't fully approved, design changes that made during the project, and implement weather led to cost and timeline overruns. I'm not gonna get too, we can, please, we take, we love questions after this, to go over everything, and we get that, I don't, the lights, we're looking forward to those to be up and running, and we, we can't wait. It will help a lot. Fayville Playground, in, in a similar situation, it's, it's, it's gonna continue as weather permits. The park will open in, in spring two thousand and eighteen. Again, the funding request was not fully approved, and design changes over time change everything. When you have a lot of people putting in different ideas of the perfect park that they want to have, it takes time. And it's gonna be pretty spectacular when it's done. But we understand that these, there's been some delays in there, we're not trying to hide from that, and we're trying to work together to have these issues not happen again. Some very important issues that I think, and then we'll move on, is risk mitigation steps for future efforts. Learning, what did we learn, how can we fix some of these issues that we've had? And issues I don't, I'm not gonna get too intense, because I, but I think these are normal issues that sometimes occur when, when we're, when we're doing these things. But recreation projects will not move forward without full funding, as outlined in requests. All projects will require a general contractor, and the general contractor will provide project management. And we think that's a big one. We need someone to help with these projects, you know, we're, it's just hard otherwise. And I think that will really help us move things along. Additional contingency will be applied to projected costs to account for unpredictable cost increases. And funding for design plans will be requested and completed ahead of cost requests for, for footprint redesign or significant facility additions. So these are just some things that we have learned that we need to do, or in our opinion, we need to do, and we'd love to get feedback from everybody. So to quickly go through, Neri Turf, you, we have a little map here, of course, I'm sorry, people, that you can't see this. But, it's a map of where, you know, Birch, where Parr and Birchwood kind of decided, you know, thought would be a good place to put it, you know? And it does seem to make sense. We have the numbers all through here. I'm not gonna go through all of them, that's just, you know, feel free to read them, and again, questions, we want them, we would love to look. Calendar Field, same thing. I laugh when I see this picture. The track, and Lumblad, same thing, the financials, you know, this is all part of the, the facility study that we did, and they're all in that book, and they're all there. One little thing I would like to say about the facility study, if I don't mind... One little thing I would like to say about the facility studies, if I don't mind, um, we've got a little bit of feedback of some issues with it, and, or not, you know, some of the print is small and things of that, and we get that, but, and now, we will do, we're doing everything to make everything, to be able to be seen. But the facts are that the numbers are there. The facility's done with the, if you want me to blow up the numbers, we can blow up the numbers and you could see them with it. But we, they're all there, and so we, we didn't do the, we need them to be seen a little bit clearer through the, through the, the book that we got. But, the work was done. It was, you know, a lot of work, and they took a long time to talk to every different group, to see how much they're using the field, all those things. So they have a whole study. And, and there were some graphs that came out that were a little bit, they were just small and hard to understand. And we'll work together to fix that. That's, you know, we don't want, we want it to be, to everybody to be able to see exactly what's going on, because it's a, it's a major problem for rec, recreation. The field usage, the over-usage, the lack of area, it's a major issue, and we don't have much more time to deal with it. We gotta get it going. That's how we feel. And, as a group, and as a group of a town, and a group of the selectmen and women, we feel like we can come up with a great plan to work together. So we're wrapping this up. Current funded projects, um, Mooney Field Lights, target date, summer 2018. Approved by CPC funding, and that's 220, uh, and some change. Richardson Tennis Courts Lights, target date is summer 2018. CPC funding, $153,000. The 9/11 Memorial Field, as we all know, is, is a work in process. We're, we're, we're rebidding it. I won't get too much into details. The approved bond is for $600,000. And, um, you know, we've worked closely with CPC. I'm on the CPC board, and there are, you know, obviously, we're gonna work with them to see if there's issues that we could do to get, to get money and things of that nature. It's a battle, you know, but we, uh, doesn't mean we can't get something from it for the fields. Fields are an interesting, uh, aren't always approved by the CPC, but there's, I think there might be a little leeway there, but we can discuss that. So, you know, we wanna make sure, we're talking a lot about fields here, but we don't wanna leave anybody out. This study was all the fields. 9/11, Calendar, Choate, Finn, Mooney, Neary, Lundblad, Trottier, Liberty State's a field, Herald-Fay Field, Trottier Track, the gyms, Trottier, Woodward, Neary. You know, I think we kinda came to the conclusion that the gyms are, are what they are, and we, you know, they're in pretty good shape, and we, they, they seem to hold our basketball pretty well. The fields do not. The cross gets left out in the spring of everything. They could barely have time to practice. We have to go rent places at St. Mark's. We have to find, they have to practice on the same field. They basically get left out. I see it. My boots are on the ground. I'm at three seasons at every field. If you walk them, if you see them, it's embarrassing. It's laughable. And it's, uh, something that I hope we can all work together, and that's why we did this, with the help of the facility studies. We're excited about it. We think it's a, we've, we've worked to try to come up with a plan, and we want as much discussion and feedback as we can get. That's really why we're here. We're not here to try to, we're just try, here to try to get some discussion going, get the ball rolling, and see what we can do to, to move forward. That's it for me. Anybody, any, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
No, I mean, I would just add that I think there's some feedback we've gotten about our timing and our submission, especially in light of when the capital planning was requested and completed. And the fact is, this, this entire plan, I haven't added it up, I don't know if you know off the top of your head, but it's millions, and millions, and millions of dollars of recommendations. So we took the time to kinda figure out, well, what's, we're not gonna do that. We need to start thinking long-term, but what's the first most important critical step? Let's fix what we already have. These have been neglected. Let's get what we do have maintained, improved, and then also, that will position us to start thinking about the bigger projects, like the turf, that we wanna do in the future. So we're really trying to start to plan ahead, but this is like, it, we know we're coming in late with the warrant article, and given where capital planning is, but as a recreation commission, we have one charge, and we think we now have this information, we need to bring it forward, and see what we can do to work with you to do so.
And we, there are a handful of extra copies of that up here, if folks in the audience would, would like one. Uh, if there's nothing further, we'll go to questions?
Please.
Okay, Ms. Fan?
First of all, I wanna thank you for entertaining me at your meetings as well. I think the whole, I think the whole process was a learning curve.
Absolutely.
There were some pitfalls, and as I said at your meeting, I think there's a joint responsibility, whether it be advisory and this board as well, so, and I've said that.
No, no, absolutely.
The biggest concern I have is a former member of the advisory board and the school committee. And I went through some old warrant articles, and I think you need to work closer with the school department, because one, uh, in April of 1998, there was an article, I'll copy this so that you'll.
Yeah, I don't know, that's good. We want all the feedback.
It was Article 45, to see if the town will vote to transfer control and management of town property, known as Parkerville Landfill, to the school department for their control. So, my understanding of control is, that's under their jurisdiction, and it was passed to the committee.
The field near the school?
The Lundblad.
Lundblad, okay, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's Article 45.
Okay.
Article 46, transfer control of property known as 208 Parkerville Road, that's adjacent to Mooney Field, to the school department. Article 47, transfer control of 204 Parkerville Road to the school department. And the reason I bring this up, I think we're going, I appreciate everything you're doing, but I think the real say in this, as far as the school properties, would be the school department. You need to have the school committee ask their special counsel what the word "control" means. As a former member, I think I have a pretty good idea. Before you go too far and find out you've done a lot of work, that you're not gonna develop it, because you might find yourself answering questions, what is control? What is use? Where do your revolving funds go? Who's doing the maintenance? And it's a very difficult position to get yourself into without having the answers upfront. It's cautionary. I'm not telling you not to do anything. But you really need to go to the school committee and ask the superintendent to find out what control they have over their property. And you need to find out what their capital plans are for the development of their school properties, as far as parking, future use, or whatever it might be, or do they really have a use for a property? And that's, and I think that's part of the capital plan. So you need to pull all of that together. You got a very short window here before a town meeting, if you're planning to bring in a warrant article. You need to have those answers.
Okay.
I, I have the plan for the landfill, too, so you can have that.
Totally. I don't mean to interrupt you. I, sorry, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, and, and first of all, oh, it is a learning process, so whether or not we did things out of order, I apologize. But, um, we have had an initial discussion with Christine Johnson. It was a great discussion, and also with the school committee to start sharing, just our initial thoughts. And granted, we did not get into any.
I'm not sure they're all aware of it either.
No, I was gonna say, I'm sure that the concept of the articles and the control all new to us, absolutely, probably to them as well. I will say, though, the good news is that it seemed, initially, it seemed to complement their plans, um, and, you know, just a commitment to work together. I think, you know, to your point, what's not in here is Choate, right? Because we don't know what's gonna happen there, and the school doesn't know what's gonna happen there. So we purposely said, you know what, we gotta wait and see what happens. But, but we do have more confidence in their plans with, with the tracks, and with the schools, and with the fields, that, for this, this first ask, but again, not.
It's a long, I'm talking about more the maintenance and the control.
Oh, and we will, absolutely.
Rules and regs together, they can't be in conflict with the school. It's Kalanda Field. I was around when that was developed. You may wanna go to the ZBA to see what the order of conditions were on that field because of the abutting residents. That was part, that was a gifted piece of property in that project, also.
And we're, you know, we don't wanna turf that or anything. We just wanted to, no, no, you're absolutely right.
There may be other conditions you might not know what they are.
We wanna do all that. That's why we're here. That, absolutely. We do not want to, we wanna do the right process and.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Ms. Brockio?
Thank you. Um, I think this is great. I, I appreciate it being put together. One question I would have is, I would like to see this put on whether Recreation's website or the town's website, so the citizens have the full use of not just a snapshot that we were handed out, but to actually have a full picture of what your goals and what your plans are for the next 10 years. I think that would be really helpful going forward in starting a discussion.
Absolutely. Great idea.
I have a bunch of questions. As someone that has, has used recreation in the fields over time with my son, not as much as I would've liked for him to be involved in sports, but as a sports mom, that's okay. I'm just curious as to, I understand the, um, shape of our fields at this point, and I'm just concerned how it got to this point. I know a plan was done in 1999, but it doesn't seem like a whole lot was done to maintain the fields between that timeframe. So, and this may not be a question you can answer tonight, but it's, it's a question I would like to have answered as to how we got from the fields not being maintained as they should be. So that's, that's a start.
So, first of all, DPW maintains the fields.
Okay.
They have a budget of about $90,000. That includes personnel time, supplies, all that kinda stuff, irrigation, all that. So, the fields right now get a very basic maintenance plan, and it's been that way for years. Part of the problem is that, that we haven't been able to rest any of the fields, because they're always in use. Uh, we have a lot of fields that are shared fields. We have, you know, outfield's in baseball, so you can't use those at the same time. So, you know, there's a lot of scheduling issues, and therefore, the fields are constantly in use. And over time, not being able to rest them, also, there, there's not, the drainage in any of these fields, I, some of them, there isn't any, never has been. So that's a big, um, issue as well. And, and it just, over time, just creates a problem. And we've never, we've never, the commissioners never put a capital plan together, and that's why they did the study.
We have a great, we did some, we have a good group of people who really care about, I mean, it's funny, I never thought I cared that much.
You took the time to put this plan together, so obviously, you care.
And I, and, and just to add, I just want you, the, the people to know that the town puts in their portion, the user groups contribute a lot on their own. You know, baseball contributes a lot to improve their facilities. Soccer.
I line up the crossfield, you're wanting for the crossfield. I line up that.
Well, let me ask another question then. Then the fees that are paid by the user groups to use the field, isn't going towards maintenance of these fields?
It goes into the general fund.
Okay.
So it offsets the budget.
So it goes into the town's general fund?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't, I wasn't aware of that. So thank you for that. When putting together the lighting projects and the priority of the fields, with the study knowing, um, the maintenance that was going to be long-term needed on the fields, and the monies that were expended, whether it be from the revolving fund or CPC, my question basically on that is, is, you're looking for a million dollars potentially for a warrant article. I mean, and now it's too late, but my question is maybe, could some of those, could some of those funds potentially have been better served towards maintenance? And that's kind of an after-the-fact question, and I realize that, but I know it's a question that's gonna be asked.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, I agree. Um, the, are you talking about the CPC lighting projects?
Well, the lighting projects, yes.
So, we cannot use CPC funds for maintenance?
Correct.
So therefore, we couldn't go.
For any of the maintenance. I thought you said some of the maintenance might be.
I, I probably misspoke. What I meant to say was more, maybe more for the development of, I, I shouldn't.
Okay, no, it's fine. If it's a mistake, that's kind of.
We know for a fact we can't do maintenance.
Okay.
I've just heard a couple of rumbles that we might be able to do some things with fields. I don't know.
That's where my.
More building of fields than it is, you know, construction.
Okay. That's where my question generated from, is if CPC could have.
Cannot do that.
So, okay. I think, again, this is a great starting point for discussion. Just a question, on the priority list within the, the, the full master plan, how were the, um, what was the, what's the word I'm looking for? How were they selected? I guess that's the easiest way to say. How did you look at each field, and what was that based on? I think that's helpful to me.
Yeah, no, no, that's a good question, but, you know, the, like Chris just said, the, the study is about every field, right? So we, it's a crazy book. It's like this long and this big.
I haven't.
Yeah, no, exactly. And, and it's, so everything has been checked out. We only have so many fields. I mean, I'm even just counting, uh, 10 or so that we even have to even work with. So we narrowed the ones, I, I think we just saw, and maybe Dorian, you can answer this better, but we, quite frankly, like we said, we could, I could be up here asking for $5 million if not, and I don't mean that, I know, but we, we have a lot of fields that need to be taken over. We, we're trying to help our footprint first with the three that get the most use and have the most potential. This is kinda speaking, I, you know, this is how I feel anyways, and, and, but, and, so those three, um, and then Lundblad just offers a lot of space that just nowhere else in the town does, that might have the potential, again, to be used. So we picked that, and, um, and then, we have just covered, and the study came to the conclusion that we need us, we call it a turf field, a multi-surface field, whatever we wanna call it, so we can not worry about the weather, so we can, you know, have, not worry about the wear and tear, that's keep up. It's not as difficult, and would have lights on as well, too. Because the lights are very important, 'cause it's like buying a car without lights. What's the point of only being able to use it till 4:30? You know, so, um, I guess it wasn't, it wasn't science, we just kinda picked the ones that we felt were the most used, and it can be ea, again, not easily turned over, but, yeah.
And you would know better than me, so that's why I asked.
Let me answer that, 'cause.
Perfect, thank you.
He did the stuff, yeah.
Thank you.
Part of the challenge of your fields in town are not just. Arthur Eddy from Birchwood Design Group.
Thank you.
Part of the challenge within the study is not just the fields themselves, it's also the size of your fields. You lack large-scale size fields. And so, in the beginning portions of the study, we really tried to focus on those fields that can provide more use for you. So you have all ages and focus on those all ages. The idea behind looking at Lundblad is that gives you, again, that space, scale, size. And that's why we kinda focused on kinda fixing those larger-scale fields, getting you the space that you need. You do have a deficiency by usage on ours. That usage is even compressed more, and it doesn't show up in the usage study, but by scale and size. So you have certain fields, certain youth groups can't use, 'cause it's not the right size. So we're trying to fix some of those bigger problems, and that's why we kinda focused on these specific sites that allow you to get more usage out of them.
Perfect. That answered my question completely. Thank you. And. I guess, where would the new location for the fireworks be? I'm sure people at home are wondering, once, once that question was brought up. I mean, that's a very well-attended event, so.
We would put them up at Trottier, but this time, the last time we did that, they weren't high enough, and we didn't see them. So this time, we will make sure that they go higher. But again, as I mentioned, that's a, that's a, um, an event that is free to everybody. A hundred percent dependent upon sponsorships.
Yep.
If we don't get enough sponsorships, that event's not, well, no, the event can happen, just without fireworks.
Right. No, okay, no, I, I appreciate that. So, by shooting, just so I'm clear, by shooting the fireworks higher, if, if it is a turf field there, it wouldn't affect the turf, is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Just wanna make sure I'm clear on this, because I know someone's gonna ask me that question.
We spent a lot of time actually talking about that one.
Fireworks is a big deal, so, um, and I guess that's it for me for now, seeing as it's a start of a discussion. I'm sure more questions, but thank you for putting this together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Shiffrin?
Thank you for the presentation. I've, obviously have a little more familiarity with it, I guess, so I don't have as many questions. I guess just wanna add or make the observations that recreation always has a ton of ideas and things that they can do. And what I've come to learn is that this board, advisory, people at town meeting deserve a long-term plan that takes into account usage of the facilities and projections, and we have that now. And there's clear needs, and, um, I look forward to be able to work with recreation to advance what they consider are the biggest priorities. One thing that's always come up whenever we have, or whenever we, whenever recreation has had any idea, is who's gonna pay for it? And my answer always was, well, the town will, and the town should. And making an. And making an improvement to a soccer field, for example, is not just for the kids playing soccer. I think if there were members of EDC here, they would explain how important, in general, having good recreational facilities improves the overall town and the character of the town, and it affects what people want to live here and do business here. So, as we think about these numbers and all the proposals that are coming forward, I just, I look at it like bigger picture beyond the actual kids that are on the fields, you know, even though it's most important to them. And the last thing I'll add is, like, the Newry Turf project, I think, is important, and it's expensive, for sure. But people should understand that a project like that has potential for income, in-kind donation, sponsorship or licensing with clubs out there. So, there's ways to offset that, and I'm sure recreation will work with user groups and the people out there privately to assist with that. So, I just wouldn't be as scared by the big numbers that are there, and hope that we can move it forward. Thank you.
Mr. Shea? Thanks for the presentation. As somebody who has coached youth soccer since 2004, I've lived, I've gone through the progression of all the fields that you've identified and know well the conditions that you described. I was spoiled this year. All my home games were on the St. Mark's turf fields. That was a nice treat for me. So, you know, so the part of me, that's, the soccer coach, is fully in support of this. I encourage you to continue to work with Mr. Purple and Mr. Ballantyne on the full capital plan. The part of me on this side of the table knows that, you know, we've had great presentations by police, fire, DPW, and others with strong, strong needs for capital programs as well. So, you know, we need to work together, we need to work collaboratively to balance it all out. I know that there are some placeholder numbers that have been plugged in, the capital plan for the rec program, but I don't think that those are fully in line with the presentation that you have. So, I do encourage you to continue that discussion. And, you know, while, Krista, you had mentioned, you're a little bit late from when Mr. Ballantyne had put the capital plan together. You know, it is still mid-November, and, you know, I've seen many, many warrant articles from my time on advisory and Board of Selectmen where warrant articles are coming before people for the first time in February, early March. So, we do have some time to work still, so hopefully, we can work together to-
Great. It's great to hear. Thank you very much.
-get a good program in place.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. One thing I didn't see in here, so I know that, I saw what Hollow, I think it was Hopkinton did, with a new indoor recreation facility, which I think is, will bring in revenue to the town, because they are going to allow other towns to come and pay to use that facility. It also would be an opportunity, I think, the rec department itself could use a new facility. But seeing now, and it was cold out today, we're in the midst of what I call nine months of winter here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. There was, would be great opportunity for teams to, you know, practice indoors, play indoors. Have you given thought to a new rec facility with indoor?
Yeah, the Doreen Memorial.
The indoor facility.
The, um-
Let's not call it that.
That's good. I'm sorry, that was a joke. That was a joke. Scratch that. Yes, we have talked a lot, I mean, we started this as a 10-year plan, and that is in the 10-year plan. That's, it's in the five to 10-year plan, because we, I, and maybe Doreen, we can talk about this more, but we have early discussions about it. We need it. We know we need it. We've thought, this is not in this, that is not in this program, and it might not be in there, because that's just talking about what we have already to work with.
It's not, okay.
We have slight, yes, we think we need it. We know we need it. As you've said, a lot of towns are starting to do that. We, that's more of a discussion we want to have. We want to have all these discussions with you. We were, you know, from talking to Mr. Purple and to doing a little bit, you know, we need to do more, this was just kind of the thought that we, we thought we'd narrowed it down a little bit for this meeting, because again, yes, 10 years down the road is important, and yes, even five years, but we need to do these things now. Now, 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 now. And so, I just don't know if building a huge facility is going to get done next year. Obviously, no.
No, but I'd love to see a continual discussion and movement towards that. I think it'd be a great benefit for our town. There is town land available, which would be great.
I agree.
So, and, you know, like Mr. Shea, I've had the honor of coaching in baseball for a long time in Southborough, and I've absolutely loved it. The fields can be a challenge. We've gone to other towns, and there is a difference when you go to some of these other towns and you see the investments that they've been able to make in their facilities. I know at Finn and Mooney Fields, there is that drainage issue you're talking about, and, you know, that, it also can become a safety issue for our kids. So, I am a, I know we have a number of, you know, athletes, student athletes here today, which is outstanding to see. And, you know, I'm very supportive of recreation and what you're looking to do for our kids. I hope we can all make it work dollar-wise at town meeting. I think it's an investment that has to be done, so very appreciative. And before, I know the hour's getting late for our student athletes who are here, maybe I can open up to a couple, if folks have any comments they want to make, the microphone is here, and then we're going to, we'll move on. Mr. Litt, you there?
I do have a couple of comments. First off, recreation is a good thing, and I support it. I looked at the slides that are in the selectmen packet, which I guess seemed to be what you were talking to.
Yeah.
And I had a couple of reactions to it that I thought I'd share in the spirit of helping you to improve. The first thing is, yeah, it's really good to have a plan. That's a good thing. That slide deck, however, reads as a wish list. It doesn't read quite as a plan. It references a youth study, and if it were me, I would have put some of the usage information into the slide deck, so people could understand the discrepancies between demand and supply for the facilities. In terms of, you know, when you propose a project, a capital project, one of the things the town has done a really bad job of recently is looking at, so what's the ongoing maintenance cost once you've invested in this good thing? And so, I think it's important to look at, so what's it going to cost to maintain this thing that you want to do, for, you know, all the things that you put in here? As a couple of the selectmen mentioned sort of indirectly, another thing that would be helpful is, so what does the balance sheet look like for the project? You know, where the, if you do this, what funds come in? You know, what do we have to spend in terms of maintenance and staffing and, you know, all the other stuff that goes along with these? Because if you want the taxpayers, you know, to make an intelligent decision, you need to look at this the way I would look at it, you know, as a budget in, you know, the corporate world, and say, okay, you know, is it a good thing? Can I afford it? What's it going to cost me, you know, for 20 years of, you know, how long is it going to last? And, you know, how does that project then meet the demand and the supply issues? Because I think you have to tell a more complete story than, I have a wish list of a lot of good things to do, because as Mr. Schiffern has said, you know, recreation has a habit of coming up with a lot of good things to do. But there is going to be a limited pool of funds and a limited amount of interest. And we need to understand, as voters, what the priorities are, and as I say, sort of what the balance sheet looks like.
Mr. Litt?
Krista Wolf.
Sam Stivers.
Sam Stivers, Presidential Drive, a member of the advisory committee, speaking as an individual advisory committee member, not on behalf of the committee itself. I'm disappointed I don't see Kathy Cook, one of my advisory colleagues here tonight. I have some concerns about the process in terms of how these numbers came about, when they became available, et cetera. As many of you, I think, may have heard, Ms. Cook made a report to the special town meeting last year about a subcommittee of advisory that took a look at capital needs over the next decade or so and bonding capacity of the town, and went around and talked to various groups about what their needs were, and came back with a list of projects, including, obviously, the public safety complex, library, senior center slash community center. In fact, when this conversation came up at the last advisory meeting, she looked at the capital plan that advisory got at the end of September that had about a little over $2 million for recreation in there. And I'm surprised to see it's now $4 million, so I'm curious in terms of where that came from. But in fact, she commented that she had asked, or that committee had asked recreation, do you have anything to go on that list? And the answer was no, when that analysis was done. So, she reported on behalf of advisory to town meeting that, yes, we can afford, you know, 20-plus million for public safety complex, eight or 10 million for library, I think, eight or 10 for community center slash senior center, total about $40 million of debt that actually was possible, given the roll-off of debt from the school projects that had occurred. And so, the debt from those projects was being paid down, and this new debt could be absorbed without having a significant impact on the tax rate, which was the question that advisory had asked originally about that group. So, I think that we felt, on advisory, at least at that point, that, at least many of us did, that, yeah, everything sort of fit, we could afford it. And her comment to town, special town meeting was, yes, we can afford this. This, again, as an individual advisory committee member, looks to me beyond to be beyond that. So, we're now in the land of, well, we can't afford everything now. And so, I think that means that we got to go back and take a careful look. I certainly don't have any qualms about the need for recreational facilities and space and so forth, opportunities. I think that these are good projects in terms of things that should be done. On the other hand, to Mr. Shea's comment a few minutes ago here, how do you balance the needs across all of these competing interests? And I think the answer, again, at this point, from my personal view of the numbers from advisory, is that we can't afford everything now, whereas not too long ago, we could say, yeah, we could afford everything that's on the list. So, I'm concerned, again, about how this happens sort of outside the normal process. I think the numbers have increased over the last couple of months from a little over $2 million to a little over $4 million now. And so, I'm wondering, you know, where's the lid on this thing? Is there other, are there other projects in the pipeline that are going to strain the budget even more? I like to think about things in terms of, can we find ways to pay for some of this through user fees, for example, to offset that cost, as folks have mentioned here? I think that's very attractive. But I think we're now in the territory of needing to take a much more careful look at all the projects and how do we rebalance priorities, where in fact, we thought we had a good handle on this. And I'm a little disappointed that apparently, this wasn't on the radar for recreation when advisory did ask that question previously. So, I'm going to suggest to advisory that we go back and take another look at this and try to figure out what fits and doesn't fit, and be prepared to talk about how this works or might not work at the next town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi. My name is Manny Harwich. I live on Oak Hill Road, and I am here as part of Northborough, Southborough, Girls Across, and on behalf of all the children in town. I am a high school guidance counselor as well, and I see the benefit of youth sports by the time the kids get to the high school. And I think there's nothing more valuable than having kids participate and play in a safe environment, have fun. And I just want to thank the recreation committee and the board for entertaining this, because I think wellness for life is our future. If we have healthy children and healthy adults, our towns and our country will be a better place. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Jared Bozan, 36 Pickle Road. I'm also in charge of fields for Southborough Youth Soccer. So, I basically walked every blade of grass of every field in town for the last two years. My son's leaving in eighth grade at the end of this year, so I have really no dog in this fight. I'm done with sports, thank God. But I will say, I hear about priorities and needs, and there's priorities here that you're going to have a kid that's going to be injured soon. There's kids who have already been injured on these fields. I've seen it. I've also gone every week and covered up rocks with dirt before games. This is a ticking time bomb. You are going to have a child, could they get hurt on one of these fields? If it doesn't get done soon, that's going to happen. So, I tell the Board of Selectmen, I tell everybody in this audience, I tell the town, this has to be done now. This can't wait a couple of years, because you're going to have a child who's going to be hurt, and it's going to be on the, it's going to be the town that's going to be the one that's going to be having priorities besides fixing fields. There's going to be other issues you're going to have to worry about. And I just strongly urge you to please consider fixing these fields immediately. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'll just reiterate, Recreation Commission's planning objective number one.
Excuse me?
Ensure the safe, yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Oh.
I didn't mean to cut you off. I hope you have reported what you found and what you repaired, because you just went on the record, and if you have noticed something, you shouldn't be using the field.
We've reported, and we fixed the field. They get fixed, but they deteriorate.
So, the fields at this point in time are safe to use, based on what you just said. We need to have clarification here, because if you're using a field that's not safe, then it's your responsibility to have, not to have the youth out there playing.
Thank you for that. Yes, I do report that. They do get fixed.
All right. So, the fields are safe to use. That's what I'm saying.
Absolutely safe to use, but they are Band-Aids being put on them. At some point, the Band-Aids are going to rip.
I'm not making light of what you said. I have coached, I've had children in sports, and now I'm a grandmother with children in sports. I'm very familiar with the fields. But when you make a statement like that, it's saying that we're not addressing what's being brought to our attention at the time of being used, so corrective action could be taken. I understand there's maintenance, but there's a very big difference about a hazard that's known in allowing children to play on a field. That's all I'm saying.
I understand that. And what I'm trying to say is that, if we continue just to keep on pushing this down the road, then that is going to be a problem.
And I don't think that's the intention that, I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And I don't think anybody here is either.
No, I don't. And I don't think that, and I don't say that. I'm just saying it is an urgency matter, that to me, being on the fields the last few years and seeing them slowly deteriorating, which they are doing, there needs to be addressed, and how to fix these now.
Okay. Thank you.
And that was my comment. And I know-
I'm sorry, Mr. Cor-
The planning objective number one, ensure safe and quality conditions across all facilities used for sports and recreation.
It's our number one issue.
And you led with that for a reason.
Yeah, we led with that for a reason.
And maybe we'll do one more comment, sir, please.
Great. Thanks. Colin Hines, Sixsmith Lane. I'm also representing Southborough Youth Soccer. Just on that last point, sometimes we don't know safety issues until they happen. So, you know, when we, when things happen that compromise safety of our players, we report it right away. Ms. Galigan and her, and her folks do a great job at repairing those and working with Doreen. But sometimes, just based on the general condition of the field, kids get hurt, and then we report it. So, you know, it's sort of the nature of what we're, the hand we're dealt, unfortunately, sometimes. I just want to say that this has been a really great partnership, this process, between the user groups, of which we're one of the largest, if not the largest, user group on the fields that we've been talking about. And to us, our voices were heard. So, when you look at that report and you look at the recommendations, you can feel confident that they reflect the needs of at least one user group, which is Southborough Youth Soccer, both boys and girls. When we think about what we're trying to accomplish here, we're looking at safety and access and enjoyment, and trying to make sure that, generally in that order, that that's how we're prioritizing what we as a user group need, and the safety part we talked about. The access part being, you know, it's hard without lights for people working in the city to get to these, or even really anywhere, frankly. Sundown yesterday, I think it was 4:20, I believe. I don't know how many of you, you know, work full-time jobs, but getting out at 4:20 can be a real hassle. So, we're trying to find coaches or other volunteers to participate with their children and support the program. It makes it really, really difficult. And as far as the enjoyment piece is concerned, it's just not quite as enjoyable to play on fields that aren't up to par. When we really start to see it, is when we start to go to other towns. So, when you're just playing within your sort of, your bubble of Southborough, you know, there'll be some comments that come. But as soon as people start to go into travel, at least with soccer, they start to get exposed to this whole new world of, oh, my gosh, I can't believe, you know, Medway has, you know, five turf fields, and there's three that no one's even using, because they have such an embarrassment of riches. Ashland has four or five, and Hopkinton has four or five, and now potentially a, you know, something indoors. And I think that when we look at our high school teams, and, you know, both are in the district championship for soccer, Division I, we are feeding a really great program. And to be able to do that, we really need to be able to be up to at least par. I don't think any of us are asking for, we need to have the ultimate, you know, field experience for our- experience for, for our constituents. We just need to make sure it's safe, it allows access and it has a level of enjoyment that they've come to expect by playing on our neighbors' fields. So I just want to say again, thank you for the partnership because I feel like, you know, this is one where once a week for, for, you know, sometimes twice a week, we would give our input and it was a really open type of collaborative effort and, and we appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you. Sir, did you want to, do you have a comment, sir? Oh, please. Thank you.
I'm Rick Carrera, 39 Valley Road. I represent our boys lacrosse program. Kudos to rec department. They've actually invited us to come in and speak to them with respect to our, our needs in terms of the number of children that we service in our program. One of the things we're finding very challenging right now, we spend a lot of our own effort and significant amount of funds, is actually renting space outside of town. We've gone to St. Mark's, we've gone to Four Kicks, we've been out to, what's the field? Hickquarters. Those are actually somewhat very expensive facilities to, to go procure for us. In particular, we're trying to get going in the spring. We're also at the mercy of the conditions in the spring, whether it's a late thaw or late snow, which we had last year, which closed 9/11, believe it or not. It's actually very difficult to get, for us to get going in the spring. It's very challenging to get the program. And last year, we actually lost two weeks from our season, out of an eight-week season. So this conversation about having an improvement of facilities in the town actually can have a tremendous positive impact on our program and the children that we serve. So I appreciate the rec department having done that. I believe there was a comment earlier about whether or not the rec department's been collecting usage statistics and whatnot. They've actually been somewhat aggressive about asking us to, for those numbers, what our schedules are and so on and so forth. So actually, a fair amount of that actually has been discussed in terms of this proposal. And I think at some point, those would be pretty easy to bubble up. So in, in the interest, I know this is a starter conversation, there's actually a tremendous amount of data that exists under the hood with respect to this conversation starter. And we remain supportive of what they're trying to do. We're actually somewhat encouraged. So we look forward to seeing this, this happen. Thank you.
The, oh, yeah, Mr. Desmond, please.
Paul Desmond, Pinecone Lane. I'm a member of the school committee and I just wanted to confirm that rec did come before us at our last meeting. Mr. Schiffern was there in probably his last official duty as a member of rec, got elected the next day, but, and they did present to us, it was mostly about the field at, at Neary, the proposed turf field. And, well, there was nothing for us to vote on per se, so I can't speak for the entire committee, but I would say that in general, I think the mood was very supportive and, you know, we look forward to, to working with rec going forward and hopefully making this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any final comments from the commissioner?
Can we respond to, just briefly, and we'll, we promise we won't be quick, sorry.
So just to the, because we don't want to disregard the feedback and we appreciate it. So a couple of things on the deck, I guess, again, call it a learning curve. This is meant to be just kind of something that sits on top of this. So I think a lot of what you're looking for is in here, but maybe we could come up with kind of a, a more in-depth cover page when this goes out in the rec website and we publicize it to address some of what you're looking for. A more concise summary or a more detailed summary, which this was not intended to be. This was meant to be just kind of our presentation tonight. Ongoing maintenance, definitely part of the discussion. So, you know, we've been talking to the DPW, Karen Galligan, I believe, and I don't want to speak for her, she's not here tonight, but the initial projects that we have, I think the existing maintenance plan would stay for the fields. So where maintenance really becomes a question is with that Neary turf. Like, what does it take? Is there a special equipment? Which is why we didn't come and put 2.4 million out there. We're going to, you know, take the advice we're getting and get proper design and understand what that all takes. So that's very much our intention to include all of that in there. The balance sheet, you know, certainly we've started some of that analysis, like what could we get in revenue? So I think that's something that we can put forward. And then for the advisory board, I'm not sure what the timing was or when your analysis was ongoing, but like, it, it, this certainly wasn't an intentional lack of transparency. In fact, we're here because we want to start promoting complete transparency into our plans and what we're thinking. It could have been a timing issue, it could have been a learning process. But certainly, you know, we're pretty confident in these numbers that we have here based on the study. There is more to come. You know, this is a, kind of a phased effort where we're focusing on what we know and we're confident in now. There's other things down the road, Choate being one of them, a community center being another, that we don't have enough detail that we feel good putting it in front of people. So that's where we got to come up with a plan to get to those details. But we're going to be transparent, you know, all along the way and we want to partner with you and, and the board to do so.
Yes, and in conclusion, we just want to thank everybody. Thank you for everybody for coming. Thank you for putting us on today. We really just want to open this discussion and I think it's a good start today. And we look forward to any feedback. Happy Thanksgiving. We are really passionate about this and I've held back a little bit. It's, it's hard. It's frustrating when you're out there and you see it with your own eyes and it's, but it's great to, lastly, we've had great cooperation with everybody, all along with the selectmen, the selectwomen and everybody. So we don't, we just want to continue that and do it, do it the right way and get it done. And we look forward to it. So thank you so much.
I'd like to thank the commission also, in particular, thank the coaches, parents and our student athletes who came out tonight. Thank you.
Go to the gobble-wobble, thank you.
Mr. Kalanda? Could we have them back in around January if they're planning to have?
When they're ready.
We would love to.
Love to, absolutely.
Is that what you would suggest?
Well, it can't be too much later than January, the end of January.
Please work with Ms. Hale, Mr. Purple about a date in January.
And Ms. Galligan also, as far as what she's going to absorb in her budget.
Yeah, I think tonight was a tough night for some, but we had some support, but, you know, we could, yeah, yeah. But thank you.
If I could add one thing as well, before you come in back in January, one thing that might be helpful is if you, again, work with Ms. Galligan and figure out, obviously, the $90,000 number isn't what the maintenance is. So if we're going to do these fixes, let's figure out what the true number is going forward so we can maintain things. So, believe me, we understand that once there's a problem, it costs a lot more to fix it than had it been maintained. So if we could just figure out that number by the next time you guys come back, that would be awesome, then we'd know going forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There was, sorry, there was a question and answer about the user fees and how they go into the general fund. Is there still an ongoing discussion with Mr. Ballantyne and Mr. Purple about maybe a better way that they can be accounted for and go towards field maintenance or, is that ongoing or no?
We haven't talked about it recently, but it's something we can definitely bring back to the table and look at and discuss.
We spoke with Mr. Purple and unfortunately, he took the brunt of, brunt of our passion for the first 15 minutes. Or my passion, but it worked out, it was great to get the, you know, we're not there to yell at any, that wasn't what we were doing, but I, we got a good conversation, we were there for like an hour and it was a good start and we want to talk to Mr. Ballantyne. We're learning this stuff, we really are. And now without Brian and we're, we're really, we're new and Jen's been a great help and we, we have a good group and we're going to build it even a little stronger. I think we need two more members and we're going to, we're going to move, you know, we're going to, we want to work together and get it done.
Yeah, because when you're, when you're in front of town meeting, that's, it'll be prime time and you want to have all of that preparation done in advance and have the advocacy of different boards and committees, advisory, this board, our finance director, our town administrator. So, yeah, a lot of work to be done, but this is a great update tonight.
It's a great start. Thank you so much.
I do one final thought. Just actually for, for Ms. Hale, if we could, seeing as there are down two members, maybe we could do a little blast.
I was just looking at the website right now.
Okay.
It's one right now, I saw it.
Okay. Especially with coming forward with something as important as this, I think you should, we should have a full commission. So anything we can do to help them do that.
That's great. We're working on it, but I do, we appreciate that for sure.